All right, so I'd like to call the afternoon, regular afternoon meeting of the Langley Township Council to order. Could I have a motion to adopt and receive the agenda and all on-table items, please?
Challenge, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Fox. Second?
I do actually.
You, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Counselor Long?
Yes, so Madam Chair, there is a delegation request on the table, so would we have to introduce a delegation item on the agenda to approve this?
I just said all-on-table items, so that was included in the motion.
Well, I don't know if that would be the case. Is that the case? Because this is adding something to the meeting.
Sorry, I'm new here, but I was told that was the case, so.
Okay, so then the clarification that we're also adding, in voting for the agenda, we're adding the delegation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Counselor Arneson seconded that.
Madam Chair, just a bit slow down. By saying "all-on-table items," you've included the category. Council must now deliberate if they wish to entertain the delegate themselves, and that will occur right after we adopt the minutes and before the business license cancellation meeting, because that's not on the agenda, so that's the effect of the steps we've taken.
Okay, thank you. So, everybody was in favor of the minutes and the agendas by show of hands, thanks. And adoption of the minutes from the regular council meeting on March 27? Second. Counselor Arneson, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. The business license, couns-
Now the delegation.
Now the delegation, so there's an on-table item for the delegation of Mr. Armstrong. So, a motion to add him to the agenda? Counselor Long?
Yep.
Counselor Arneson? All in favor? Thank you. And now we move on to the business license cancellation hearing for We Medical. And I presume nobody's here from We Medical.
So, Madam Chair, the best thing to do in this circumstance is to actually call for any representatives of We Medical who are here for the show cause hearing as to whether their business license should not be revoked or canceled. Would be to go the same process as with the public hearing, so make three calls for them. If there are none, then we'll proceed to the resolution if there's a mover and seconder.
Okay, so this will be the first call, then, for a delegation from We Medical in the hearing of the business license matter. Second call of the license, business license matter for We Medical. And third and final call in the matter of the business license for We Medical. Seeing no one. So, I would entertain a motion that council authorize cancellation of the business license issued to We Medical Center related to the property at 27243 Fraser Highway pursuant to Section 15.1E and 62 of the community charter.
So moved.
Counselor Whitmarsh moves. Second by Counselor Sparrow. Any discussion, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And the motion is approved. I didn't mark Counselor Richter absent. Thank you very much. So, Counselor Richter and Mayor Fros are both absent, and it was passed unanimously. Oh, and Counselor Davis, I'm sorry. So, the next item of business is to move into special close, so I'd like a motion to anything to add to the agenda first?
Yeah, I'd like to add property.
Counselor Long, property. Anything else? Seeing nothing, I guess we'll just adjourn into special closed.
No motion.
Okay, thank you. So, everybody in favor of moving? Thank you. Seeing no opposition. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the regular afternoon council meeting for the township of Langley. I'd like to take a motion to vary the agenda, please. So, I would like to move items G1, H1, H2, H3, and I1 up. Our delegation isn't, our presentation for the United Way isn't expected until 4:00. So, could I get a motion to vary the agenda? Counselor Arneson?
Second.
Counselor Sparrow, thank you. Any concerns or challenges with that? All in favor? Thank you. So, moving item G1 up. That's the Agricultural Land Commission application number 10314.
Move.
Thank you. A seconder?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Whitmarsh. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions, perhaps through you to staff. If somebody could please clarify the current zoning, RU1 in the ALR. Does that just allow for one home, or is that two?
Through your worship to Counselor Arneson, RU1 in the ALR allows for up to two homes if you meet the requirements of Agricultural Land Commission, so they'd have to be a bona fide farm to have the second house.
Okay, thank you. And just also a clarification. It referenced in the report that the, there would be a joint interest in the remnant lot between two of the family members. Is that correct?
Through your worship to Counselor Arneson, that's what the proponent has indicated, although from the township's point of view, and I guess the land commission looking at as a, as a homesite severance application, meaning that they need to have farmed the properties since '72, and the land commission will make that determination for the proposed approximate two-acre homesite lot, with the remnant lot then being sold.
Thank you.
Counselor Richter? It's coming.
Okay, I'm looking at the diagram on page 15, or page 5, if you're on your computer. And my question in looking at it, yes, that's the one, how are they going to access that lot? Like, where's the access to it going to come from?
Through your worship to Counselor Richter, I'll try and use the cursor here. So, the access would be through this direction here. We had a, there's a current right-of-way on this property here, and council may recall there was a, in the last three months, an application to develop this property here, which will give the sub-ly 10 meters of this road here, which could then access this property here.
Okay, so the road that's not built there is going to be built. Now, will this, if this lot is severed off and sold, I'm not sure if it's going to be sold, will whoever purchases have to contribute to the building of that road as well?
Through your worship to Counselor Richter, yes, that's correct. For their portion of the road, where my cursor is indicated now, the previous applications would have been responsible for their subject portions.
Okay. So, with this severance, is there a plan to build a house then on that lot, or is it just the plan to sell it?
Through your worship to Counselor Richter, the item at hand currently is just the subdivision application, and the, my understanding of the land commission policy is that the homesite severance lot needs to be owned by the owners of the property that have been constantly farming the properties since '72, and I believe there's a five-year restriction from transferring it until subsequent to the subdivision being created.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fox?
Just in response to that, my understanding, talking to the proponent, who's the only person sitting in the audience right now, is that the plan is the family to build a house for, and keep it in the family.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we'll call the question on item G1. And that is, that passes with Counselor Richter, Counselor Fox, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Qualley, Counselor Sparrow, and Counselor Long in favor. Next item on the agenda is correspondence, and can I have a motion to receive all of the correspondence?
Move.
Counselor Davis, Counselor Arneson, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you.
Your worship, if we could conclude the receipt motion, then we can go through each piece of correspondence for discussion.
So, all in favor of receipt? Any opposed? Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to speak to H1. This is further to some information that we received regarding a petition to remove the GST that's currently being charged on the carbon tax. So, I just looked into this a little bit, and I think that this is an initiative that came from Counselor originally in Vernon, and we were made aware of the fact that there was a petition going around. And I wasn't really familiar with this until I read that, but I thought it would be helpful to discuss this as a council in the event that we wanted to endorse the resolution for advancement to UBCM and potentially AFCM, just because irrespective of how you feel about the carbon tax, in fact, currently, the way the situation is, the way the tax is being administered, is that the GST goes on to, so you're already paying tax with your gas tank, you know, and when you get taxes, but then you pay the GST on top of that calculation, so now you're paying the tax upon the tax. So, this is an effort to try and go back to what the government said originally, the federal government said it was going to be revenue-neutral in terms of the imposition of the tax. And so, this is the expectation that this goes forward, and perhaps the federal government will rescind this.
Counselor Fox?
I'm not on this.
Oh, not on this topic? Okay. Counselor Long, are you on this topic?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. So, just in terms of process, then, this is just from last month, March 13th. So, they've sent it to SILGA, which is their regional association, and I guess I'd be curious to know what response they've got from SILGA. And I guess the other way to look at this would be, they're outside of LMLGA, so they would, that wouldn't necessarily come to our regional meeting in May, but it's going to be at SILGA. I guess it'll be debated there, and then it would move on to UBCM. So, I'm not sure really what position, I think we'd have to do some research on this if we were going to support it, and there's plenty of time for that. I think if council were ready to jump right on it, it was sort of a no-brainer, we could endorse it, but probably makes for interesting debate when we'll find out what this, the resolution that SILGA came up with, and what the body there decided, and then it would go to UBCM, where it can be debated there. So, I think just receiving is probably the best way to go.
Thank you. Counselor Richter, are you speaking to this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we should just move, and I'll put the amendment on that council endorsed the resolution to remove GST charged non-carbon tax to UBCM and AFCM.
Counselor Whitmarsh seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Ms. Bauer, do I label that H1?
Yes, it's H1.
And that passes with Counselor Long opposed. And Counselor Richter, did you have something else, or were you just on the speaker's list for that op item?
That was it. We're done with that now, right?
Thank you. Counselor Fox, back to you.
I was looking at H4.
Okay, sorry, so we'll go through the others, then, I guess.
Yeah, go through the other two.
Any questions or comments on H2?
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Richter?
Yes, I, our last meeting before April 28th is, I believe, April 24th. I looked that up earlier, so I think we should have a minute of silence in chambers on April 24th. Do we need a motion for that, or can that just go on the record?
Just move it to the April 24th meeting?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion on H2? H3? No, just receipt. H3, any discussion? Seeing nothing. Moving on to H4. Any discussion?
Well, I'm just hoping that Meatless Monday doesn't occur on a, on a council meeting night, so we can have some meat on Monday nights for council, because, you know, I think Counselor Davis and I would be, we'd wilt if we didn't have our meat on Monday.
Any other discussion on the H4? Counselor Davis?
I could use with a lot of wilting, but I don't agree with somebody making a declaration that I, how I should eat at this point, thanks.
Thank you. So, seeing no other discussion regarding Meatless Monday, we'll move on to our minutes of committees. And I1 is the Agricultural Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee minutes. Counselor Richter moves, seconded by Counselor Sparrow. Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a comment and a request further to the discussion that was held there regarding water and agricultural use, because I know at one time Counselor Fox and I had discussed an opportunity that we mutually had through Metro to go and talk about water conservation. So, I'm wondering if we might use this as an opportunity to discuss, to invite Megan Norton-Daniel to appear as a delegate to council to speak a bit more about water and agricultural conditions in the township of Langley. Well, she has already agreed to do that, but needs to be invited, as far as I understand.
Okay. Any other discussion, or would you like to make a motion that we refer that to CPC or to a CPC? Okay, so do we need a motion, Ms. Bauer? So, Counsel Arneson, would you make that motion?
Yes, I would like to refer to a future CPC meeting, that we invite Megan Norton-Daniel to appear as a delegate to speak about water use in the township of Langley, including conservation and agriculture.
And a seconder for that? Counselor Davis, discussion? Counselor Richter?
Yes, well, I think Kevin Larson should be included in that presentation to council. And the, the reason why this came before the Agricultural Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee was because of the concern levied over the new groundwater legislation that's going into place, and the need for farms to be metered now, and their use will be recorded. So, I think that having them both there is probably going to give council a better picture of what the issues are relative to water than just having one, because Ms. Norton-Daniel focuses more on what the township is doing in terms of its own conservation plans, as opposed to what's going on in the bigger picture.
So, is that a friendly amendment to add Mr. Larson to the presentation?
Well, I don't know if it's friendly, but I'd like to add it.
I assumed it was friendly, but maybe not. Mr. Zwag, did I see your light go on? Did you have something?
Yeah, just seeking some clarification, they are both township staff members, both working in the same department, so do we both be appearing at council and the CPC regardless?
Okay, so does that work for you, then, Ms. Bauer? Thank you. So, seeing no other, oh, Counselor Fox, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I did, just on the same topic, although not specific to either of those two individuals coming to speak. At the Metro Utilities Meeting last Saturday, had an interesting presentation from Hugh Fraser, ironic last name, who's the Deputy Director for Engineering for the Corporation of Delta, about monitoring water salinity. The Corporation of Delta actually extracts irrigation water from the Fraser River, and they've got a very sophisticated methodology for monitoring the salinity of the water that they extract from their, their sources. And not that I want to confuse the two, and absolutely don't want the two to coincide at a similar meeting, but it was definitely an interesting presentation, because even at this table, and I know in correspondence we received, you know, why don't we use the Fraser River? And it sounds like a very perfect solution to a lot of challenges that we may have with long-term irrigation, especially in the agricultural industry, but it's not just as simple as that, and salinity does play a role in the capability of the water to actually be used for agricultural purposes, both for animals drinking and for crop irrigation. Anyway, I just say that, it may be, I know there's protocols when it's a deputy director of an engineering of another municipal jurisdiction, but I think it's somewhat unique, and maybe I could ask through you to Mr. Zwag, do we do anything with monitoring salinity or not?
Thank you, Counselor Fox. To the Chair, Madam Chair, we are currently exploring long-term groundwater supply, supplies, including extracting from the Fraser River, including other ground supply, also it's one of the items we are looking at. As respect to salinity, that's something that I have not been brought to my attention, but I could follow up and report back.
Yeah, it may be something that we want a CPC presentation on, maybe later this year or sometime, not when it conflicts, obviously, with, with the presentations that have just been requested.
So, is that a motion, or would you just like that? As direction, or?
I'll just give it to Direction.
Okay.
To staff.
Is that all right? Yeah.
Is that okay?
Counselor Richter, did you want to speak again? Are you, no, thank you. So, seeing no other discussion on this, we'll call the question on the referral to CPC. And that passes unanimously. So, that brings us back to our delegations and.
Still, we could still process any other business items that council may have at this point, and then wait for the delegations.
Okay. Is there any other business today? Oh, yes. Counselor Arneson's, I have too much paper here.
I should clarify, I'll defer to Counselor Arneson. I presume that this integrated stormwater management plan is a subject of a delegation, so I didn't mean this other business item, I meant any other or further other business besides that one.
Other new, new business?
That's right.
Yes, okay, so other new business, Counselor Richter?
Yes, I have a request to make with regards to the public hearing this evening, and Vesta is, of course, the only group that's on the public hearing tonight. In the past, when Vesta has made delegations to council, or when there's been presentation or public hearings, they come in with several of their consultants, and each of them proceed to talk for very lengthy periods of time. So, I'm wondering, through you to Mr. Backen, if we can limit the Vesta presentation tonight to one speaker for 10 minutes, unless there has been questions raised by the audience that requires, because what Vesta has done in the past, in my mind, is stand up in front of us and give us a sales spiel, and we've already got the sales spiel, we've got the first and second in front of us, or had it in front of us, we've got the public hearing. So, what we, the pattern of practice that we seem to be doing with public hearings, and have been doing for the past couple of years, is the proponent can speak after the public has spoken, but to address the specific issues that have been raised by the public, as opposed to standing there and giving us a half an hour sales presentation.
So, to my knowledge, we've never had restrictions or limitations on the proponent's participation after the public hearing. Mr. Backen, can you?
The issue's actually a bit broader. It's really probably best looked at from the perspective of can we require anyone in a public hearing to speak only once, or speak for a limited time period? And to my knowledge, the answer is no. As long as they're speaking about issues that are germane to the application, and that they're not repeating themselves and going over things incessantly, any person, and we saw this with other delegates in the past, that would speak five minutes, which is a matter of scheduling, and then a further five minutes, and a further five minutes provide us new information. I think, however, as to the specifics of the sales pitch, we can simply ask the proponent to speak only in the context of responding to any issues that are right, have arisen, and not to engage in any marketing. We can try that as a request, but in terms of formally limiting them, that would be a challenge because of the implications for others, or the challengeability of the public hearing process itself.
Okay, so we can't limit them on time, is what I hear you saying?
Ask each speaker to go five minutes, so if Vesta has four speakers, I'm just using this as an illustration, each one could then speak for five minutes, and then they could repeat until they finish their presentation. That would apply to anyone that would be coming forward. However, I'm simply saying is that because they're there primarily to respond, we'll simply ask them to hold their submissions very, I guess succinctly, and to anything that's raised in the public hearing, because it's going to be more relevant for council to hear those submissions than the sales pitch, we'll say at night.
Yeah, so what happens in the case, like, let's say we've got, nobody shows up to speak at the public hearing tonight, do we still have to sit here and listen to them for 40 minutes?
In theory, any, in theory, they've shown up to the public hearing, so in theory, yes, but in practice, because if that's, that may be perceived as being a positive, that no one has actually shown up, that's arguable, but if you accept that premise, they would be wise to not make any submissions at that point. That would be our message to them.
Yeah, okay, so can we ask them to focus, then, on answering the questions that the public raised?
Correct. The Chair can reinforce that as well, but we'll do it beforehand as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion under new, new business?
I'll move adjournment. I adjourn.
Okay. Move adjournment until 4:00, when the delegations arrive, seconded by Counselor Arneson. Any concerns with that? All in favor of the adjournment? So, we'll adjourn until 4:00. Thank you. Limit speaking time for everybody now. Is Gabriel Avalar here? Thank you. Welcome. So, you have five minutes for your presentation today. Thank you. Thank you.
So, thank you so much for hosting me today. United Way of the Lower Mainland encompass all the way from sea to sky now, including Abbotsford, Mission, Hope, and the Fraser Valley, and the township of Langley has been a great partner for 25 years, and today I would like to recognize you for the partnership. Again, my name is Gabriel Avalar, I've been with United Way for four years now, I am an immigrant, and I've been in the township for three. I live in the new booming Willoughby area, me and probably a thousand other young families with young kids, that have long commutes, not necessarily have all the financial means to live in Burnaby or Vancouver, or in the more expensive parts of the metro, and are looking for a community where they can raise their kids. And Langley has become, or is becoming more and more, this community where people can come, young families can come, and find a townhome or condo where they can start. And that's where United Way comes in, is when young families, sometimes like myself, families of immigrants, they're trying to make a life in this new country, sometimes families of refugees, sometimes local Aboriginal communities, sometimes people that have been here for two, three, 10 generations, but are, you know, trying to get by in a really expensive city, as the metro is. And United Way is working to try to address the needs of the people most in need. So last year, the township of Langley, the staff at the township raised $12,000, $192, and I'm here to say thank you on behalf of United Way. It's a proud donation from your staff, from the people that make this building, that make this organization, given to an organization that is trying to care for children and senior in this community. Over the last 25 years, you've given $556, almost $57,000 to United Way as donations, all from your staff. Again, this is not a corporate gift, this is not coming from a large, rich organization, this is people giving to people, and it makes me really proud. Last year alone, United Way funded directly 42 programs in this community, in the Langley area, supporting 34 organizations and investing $970,000. I've actually met Counselor Patrina Arneson at one of those agencies when I was at Langley Community Services Society. Remember when the federal government brought new refugees to Vancouver, and those refugees couldn't afford to live in Vancouver? And they migrated to Langley? So United Way put in a new, we called it the flexible funding, $100,000 investment on one organization to help those refugees with translation for health needs. The flexibility of United Way of analyzing and looking at the entire community and saying, there is a need here, it needs to be addressed, if we wait for it, if we wait a year or two, it's going to be more complicated, has allowed United Way to create partnerships and investing people in really strong ways. So, United Way continues to strive to help kids be all they can be. It's one of our focuses, we recently reviewed our focuses and realized that investing in kids is the best bang for our buck. We have two different grant streams, one from kids from zero to six years old, helping with literacy, with playtime, with education, and with parent and support caregiver, parent and caregiver support. We're trying to help kid, help people move from the cycle of poverty and break into a life where they can support and sustain themselves without the need, without the help of their peers. Connecting people, not only giving food, which is absolutely necessary, but teaching people how to eat healthy. We have recently invested on a new concept, a concept, well, not new, but a concept that has been more and more spread out, is the concept of community kitchens, where we teach people how to cook the food that we know is healthy, but when you're living in poverty, not necessarily you've thought how you cook Brussels sprouts, or whatever food that you might get at the food bank, or it's healthy food, but you don't know how to eat it, therefore it goes through the garbage. So we're trying to help people access food, but also know how to cook that food. And in community kitchens, people connect with other people, moms connect with other moms, and share recipes, and become friends, and look after each other's kids, and support each other. And our last focus area is building stronger communities, and this is a really broad area that we focus, and we're trying to help communities remain strong. And with a new community like the one I live in, there is a lot to strengthen. There is people where I live, from, my neighbor is, one side is from Korea, the other side is from Pakistan, and there are people from all over the world just in my complex, and helping people connect and break those barriers is really important. One of the largest funding programs we do right now is BC 211. The Help Line 211 is just like 411, it's 100% funded by the United Way, but it's for social services. Last year, over 54,000 people accessed that line. Coming from Langley, housing was a huge reason for people to call that line, access to financial support, access to food and abuse were the top four calls from the Langley area to the Help Line that we've created. That line is helping people connect to nonprofit, to government, to services that are available to support them in breaking out from the cycle of poverty, abuse, getting access to childcare, counsel, like lawyer counsel, is really helping them move on with their lives. So, thank you again for championing the work we do. I wanna, I know I don't have a lot of time, but if you have any questions, I would love to answer any questions you have about the work we do, and I would love the opportunity to leave you with a couple pieces of information about the work we do. This is about your campaign, this is about the work we do in Langley, and to present you with the 25-year award from United Way for employee giving.
So I was mistaken, you have 15 minutes, not five minutes, so I'm sorry if I didn't mean to rush you.
It's okay.
So if you have more to present, then feel free to carry on, I didn't mean to rush you.
That's okay, I actually, if you have any questions, I would love to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Great.
Counselor Arneson?
Yes. Yeah, thank you very much for coming, it's very much appreciated, and I did have some questions that you have ably answered. My questions were around what the focus currently was in our community, but you did a good job of explaining that, and also just to really say thank you so much, and also to the employees of the Township of Langley who have done an extraordinary job in terms of fundraising. I just did have a thought, though, I'm wondering, and to the degree to which we could enhance our ability to interact with you and support you in your efforts in our community, because I think that can just only make whatever programming you do better. So I just want to point out that we will be having a social planner in our community, which I think might be interesting, because we may have the facility to be able to talk more collaboratively about the interests of the community that you perceive, and what we can do to help. And just really interesting to know what the top priorities are, what people call in for the 211 number, and also thank you so much for all the wonderful work you do for our new immigrants.
Thank you. It would be absolutely a pleasure to be able to work with a social planner. We, at United Way, the model of working at the Way, we have seven social planners, they're community planners, and they analyze different regions of the metro. One of them is Eve Trudell, he looks after Langley, and Eve is constantly in contact with government, municipality, trying to find out what is that is happening. Sometimes Eve will meet with the people at the hospital to understand what kind of needs they're having, at the school board, and being able to meet with a social planner at the township will help him make decisions in regards to grants. So when United Way creates grants to help the community, they're most of the times based on the immediate needs of the community, or the needs that we see progressing over time. We will continue to invest in Langley, I will continue to be, I've been for a year and a half now, and I'll continue to be the contact between United Way and Langley for the fundraising campaign, and I work very closely with, and I just want to say thank you to Melissa Cook, she's one of your clerks, and she did an amazing job. I met with Melissa six in the morning at the pub, at Morview Pub, with Mayor, and she did an amazing job to help us.
Six in the morning?
Six AM. I know, right? And she was there to help us put together this event, so we're really thankful for the work she does, as a volunteer off the side of her desk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any other questions from Council, but I would like to, I do have a question for you. When you talked about the community kitchens and the nutrition component, I wonder if you guys partner with the BC Association of Farmer Markets and the nutrition couponing that they do through the farmers' markets?
I'm not, I haven't heard of, I don't know all of it, but I haven't heard of that partnership. I know we currently partner with Arosha in Langley, and they have a farm, a community farm, where all the products that is harvested there goes to the food bank, and I know we partner with LEPS, the Langley Ecological...
Partners?
Yes. And we partner with them, and I actually had a really funny, I was with my little son at one of the schools in the neighborhood, and they had a booth, and they came with this little bag and gave it to my son, and inside there was a pamphlet with the United Way logo there, due to the funding that we give to them. So we're trying to remain relevant in the community to the best of our ability, we continue to invest in research to better support kids and seniors and families in our neighborhood.
Well, the, there's no question that United Way has lots of tentacles throughout the community, but that might be a good program for you to look into, and it's run through the BC Association of Farmers Markets, and LEPS is a partner in that as well, and it's helped spread some coupons to those in our community who are of lower income, both seniors and families, so that they can shop for local and organic food at our local farmers' markets. It's a really robust program through them, and it sort of would feed, ironically, that mission that you guys are trying to reach as well. It's no surprise to me at all, the numbers that you talk about, you know, the 12,000 this year, and over half a million dollars over the years. I mean, Langley is known as a very generous community, and it's no surprise to me that our staff are as generous as they are, but it's really great to hear back from you how meaningful that is, and how it's being presented to the community once you receive it from our staff. I mean, we can pass this on to them, but I wonder if there's an opportunity for you to reach out to the staff directly, I mean, for you to, you know, talk to them and thank them personally, it's great to funnel it through us, but I think the recognition to them should come from you directly somehow as well, so...
Absolutely, if there is an opportunity for me to do so, I will come, I can, if you tell me, I can send them an email directly. It's really, it's really a pleasure to be able to thank them, so if there is a way for me to do it, absolutely.
Maybe we could just get a copy of the presentation you delivered today with the numbers in it, and Ms. Bauer, maybe you could forward that with the thanks from the United Way to all the staff, and post it on our internal information system. I think it would be...
Absolutely. And would be great for them to know that they, we've presented you with the award here. It's really, it's an employee award, it's for the staff, it's for everyone at the city, the township.
They deserve lots of recognition, so I'm glad to see them receive that. So thank you very much for being here today, appreciate you taking the time to recognize the commitment from the Township of Langley and their staff.
Thank you for the time you gave me.
Thank you.
This one goes to, where should I, over here? Oh.
Do you want a photo with everybody, or should...
Do we have to get a picture?
Sure, how about if we all come out front there and do a quick photo op with you, is that okay? Thank you.
No, I'm gonna do it.
Here's the camera.
Here goes some more parking.
Beaver's Farm.
Beaver's Farm.
That's that, that's our guy, survey guy.
The smell.
No, no, we'll move behind.
Yeah, two rows, perfect.
They will make space for you, I'm pretty sure. There we go. That's working, that's great. Can you see everyone? Can you see me? Perfect. Thank you. Back up without tripping. Yeah, good luck. Everyone's smiling, one more. I'm lying, it's probably like two more, you know that, right? There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll see you.
Okay. Absolutely.
Yep.
We'll move on to our next delegation, which was the delegation on table from Mr. Jim Armstrong. So if I could ask you please to give your name and the city that you live in, and you do have five minutes.
As I said, I've been here before, it's Jim Armstrong. I'm at 172-8737-212th Street, and I'm the President of the Nickel Mackel Enhancement Society, and I've been asked by the West Creek Community Stewardship Group to come and talk about the West Creek Integrated Stormwater Management Plan, and the need for it. And as a Langley resident, and I have, I believe in the importance of doing the ISMPs as part of our overall development. As Langley has developed, and as the previous speaker spoke of the community efforts, the need for development within the Township of Langley, the need for affordable housing for our residents, and the need for community, the natural protection of the natural environment, and enhancement of the environment as we develop, we have to work hand in hand. Can it work? Yes. Is it costly? It doesn't have to be, if it's done right. The map I've put up here is an indication of the West Creek watershed, and unfortunately, the portion near Highway Number One there is showing Lachester Estates, which is the majority of the development, or industrial development within the West Creek watershed, which is, again, still a small portion of the overall watershed, but it's probably the most critical component. Currently, we don't have an integrated stormwater management plan for West Creek as, under the township, and so it's been developed sort of piecemeal. And as an area is developed, they sort of do a bit of stormwater management and then move on, and it's not connected. In our, using this development as an example, if we do an integrated stormwater management plan firsthand, you can actually better your development, reduce your development costs, and for the Council, get a better understanding of how you can develop. And you'll have a lot of answers to your questions, before those questions arise, when the developer comes in and says, we want to develop this, and this is what our footprint's going to be, and why. And you might be able to say to the developer, we can understand your development, but here's a better way. Here's a better way of you doing your development, and actually saving money, both for yourselves and for the township itself. And as a citizen of the township, I'm always wanting to see cost savings. As the technical lead under Metro Vancouver for developing the regional ISMPs, there are stages, and the stages are important in that you... And the stages are important in that you get a good understanding of how to develop your stormwater management plan for a particular area. What's involved, how the development will work, how it fits in. And a lot of developers are now realizing that if they do it with the ISMP first, they don't run into problems such as I have in an industrial development admission where they forgot one step. And so when they built, they forgot to take the peat out from under the footprint. Now, as the development is expanding, the stormwater requirements have changed, and we're getting buildings that are shifting. Very expensive, very costly to the developer. So as I said, one of the easy steps in West Creek is go back, do an inventory. What do we have? What do we need? How do we move forward? Let's save some costs, both for the developer and for the township. Let's not spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop an ISMP when we can do it in stages. As I see my time is up here, I'd like to just say, again, the offer, I've made it previously, is I'm willing to help the township review their ISMP requirements, given to the point of selecting a consultant. I won't be your consultant to do it, but I can help you choose the right consultants. That's what ISMP is all about. And just one comment, as president of the Nickel Mackel Enhancement Society, I'd like to invite all council members to our open house on April 29th, from 11 till 2. We're releasing 60,000 Chinook fry, and we expect about 800 members of our community there. So please attend.
Thank you, thanks for being here today. I do have some questions from council. Counselor, Counselor Richter?
Yeah. This area in Gloucester has been problematic for a while, and this issue of an integrated stormwater management plan has surfaced on more than one occasion. Now, last summer, they had the opportunity, the People BD Group had the opportunity to invite council to a meeting with them. And at that meeting, what was presented to council is that BD staff are working very closely with township staff on a water plan for Gloucester that is far superior to an ISMP. At least, that was the impression that I was left with after that meeting. So I'm wondering if you have heard anything about this, and what in your opinion would be better than an ISMP?
Well, an ISMP would be your water plan, whether it's what?
Not an ISMP. They're not doing an ISMP, but they're doing something better than an ISMP.
Well, I don't know of anything as, in my 45 years' experience, that is better than an ISMP, because an ISMP integrates hydrology, water quality, and the biological community. So this is something that's been undertaken throughout the province, and I, you know, being a former scientist at Metro Vancouver doing utility planning, I don't know of anything that is better. So I haven't seen anything from them. So I, you know, I'm just commenting on my knowledge, experience.
Well, I'm just suggesting then that there's a different perspective that council's been made aware of, that's not necessarily of the ISMP nature.
Well, if their water plan follows the checklist for an ISMP, it will tell you, it'll tell you very quickly the quality of it. Because it has, there's, it's, you know, the scientists from the different government agencies and the community built the regional ISMP, and it's very comprehensive. And so if you meet the terms of the criteria under that checklist, you've got a very good water plan, as we call it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for coming today. I have some thoughts about this, and actually, I wasn't aware sort of of maybe the distinction that was being made with BD quite with respect to the Integrated Stormwater Management Plan versus what they were planning on doing. But just looking at the overall approach from the Ministry of the Environment as well as Metro, that there is something that is considered to be a standardized format, that the expectation is, when you develop a certain percentage of your watershed, that you are going to engage in this process. And it's not a cookie cutter process, it can change depending on the kind of geography that you have, the size, the nature of the watershed, et cetera. But it is, to some degree, would you, I guess, clarify that it's somewhat of a standardized approach to this?
It's standardized, and if you look at the West Creek watershed per se, a good portion of it's agricultural. Agricultural impacts are different than industrial. Your land base, your geography is different in the agricultural than in the industrial. Once you do your development, you're increasing your impervious surface versus pervious surface. Location of your development in relationship to where your headwaters are and your lowlands, again, is different. Is it a pipe system? Is it an open ditch system? Is it a natural water course? These are all considerations that you take into account. Can you do development of combination of all? Yes. But it's critical in how you undertake that assessment of your integrated stormwater management. And it's, you know, it's something that we as a municipality should be looking at. How do we minimize our costs? It's very costly to put in stormwater sewers. Can we do it naturally? How do we maintain them? I've been here before when we talked to beavers and issues of beavers and, you know, natural environment or, and discharges from industry. How do we treat it? These are all considerations. The Minister of Environment in the 2012 letter that they sent to Metro Vancouver, the ultimate goal was protection of stream health. How do we do that? But let's reduce, let's make sure that we're cost effective in everything we do. I know Counselor Davis is a farmer. And as a farmer, they're very concerned about how they can maintain their farming practices, minimize their costs in what's becoming an urban environment.
Can I just offer a follow-up comment? I guess at this point, because this was a notice of motion that was endorsed, and the conversation is around the challenge prior to meeting the apparent threshold of 20%, that's being discussed for the development of the watershed area. So it was my understanding that the attempt was made to consider sort of a tipping point, shall we say. So if you are prospectively looking to redevelop an area or add more development to an area, that this policy anticipated that prior to making those planning decisions. That was my interpretation of what the meaning was of the guidelines. And so it would be important to, for example, bring forward, at the very least, in phase one, if that's what we're suggesting, an inventory here, just to look at the baseline of information. And then we could make more of an informed decision about the direction of where that could go and what opportunities might be there or constraints.
Well, the phase one, as I call it, the inventory, is a cost-saving measure. Because it gives you an understanding, a clear understanding of what you have on the ground, how much pervious surface, how much impervious surface, how much of your overall watershed is actually developed and what type of development it has. But it also shows how, whether your stormwater is connected or whether it's isolated. It's cheap, it's an easy way of doing it. This is what I did as a consultant when I was, I did them for the city of Burnaby. It's, it's a very clear approach that council would have, and the developer. Let's not exclude the developer. It gives the developer a very clear picture of what they need to do. And it also outlines if they've developed, you know, 18, 20%, 25% of the land base, it gives them an idea of what mistakes they've made and what their costs are going to be to correct those mistakes, and can they minimize those costs. So that's, we're all looking at the dollars. And the dollars are important these days. And community, as we've heard previously, the community, community wants natural environment. But the natural environment may be a modified environment that we're giving them, but at the same time, we're maximizing our cost savings.
Thank you. Counselor Fox?
Thank you. We're not talking about beavers.
No, we're not.
So you mentioned a couple of things that are just triggering some thoughts here. Don't lose sight of that slide there either, that's, that's sort of gives a progression, I guess. Is that, is that what it's?
Yeah, it is, it is, yeah, okay.
So in your experience, I mean, you have obviously a broader experience working with Metro Vancouver and a more community-based experience working with the city of Burnaby. What, what do you perceive to be a rough estimate of a cost of going through all four, well, I guess you've got, yeah, four dots there, four bullets. What would you perceive to accomplish those four bullets in rough dollar figures? In a, in a, in a nicely, like, we're talking one area.
One, one off.
One West Creek, right? I mean, you did the same with Still Creek or?
Yeah, yeah, I have. And, and my entire budget on Still Creek was $25,000.
He's a cheap mayor, that guy.
He is. But.
No.
The product that we were able to give them with that $25,000 was extremely comprehensive from that information. And it all boiled down to the time we spent on doing the inventory. We were, we saved money on the additional stages.
So the inventory piece, in a, go back to that map that you had up earlier.
Yes.
You yourself alluded to the fact, it's a fairly large geographic area that it covers. Does the inventory start at the Fraser and then move back up? Or is it inventory isolated to one small area?
Start at the headwaters. 70% of your inventory in West Creek is agricultural. That's according to Metro Vancouver's figures that I have. So if you've got 70% that's agricultural, your assessment of that agricultural land is going to be quick and easy. It's not, it's not rocket science. You've got farms upon farms, different sizes, maybe different products, blueberry farms, cattle, eggs, whatever. But their impact can be assessed very quickly. The water courses that run through those farms can be assessed very quickly. So when you get into the industrial area where it's concentrated, and you've got more stormwater management, small tributaries of West Creek or main channel of West Creek, but you're in the headwaters. And it's more of a sloped system. So that's where you concentrate your inventory. So you can, and I'll give you an example, I had my GIS guy look at it this morning, and we probably had half the inventory done in three hours, just looking at maps and determining what water courses were in them. And if we went to an aerial, we would probably be able to identify what the pervious, impervious. Or I'd use a drone, fly it, and do it. But are we looking at a quarter million or half a million dollars to do an ISMP in West Creek? No, are we looking at 100,000? I don't think so.
Okay.
But do the inventory.
Thank you.
No, I haven't finished.
Okay, carry on.
You, you made an interesting statement that I just want to pursue for a second. You, you perceive with a comprehensive ISMP that you would actually reduce your development costs. You alluded to an example in Mission where they failed to do one step, which was remove the peat. But that's an example. But can you just elaborate on that, how you see, and where you see those reduced costs coming into play?
Well, where I see the reduced cost from is, if you know where your water courses are, what your hydrology is through your inventory, what, what stormwater management structures you have or infrastructure you have already on the ground, you can link it very quickly, you can map it. And then you can overlay on that very map what you want your footprint for development to be, and how it's going to either interfere or how you enhance it. So you've now just saved a bundle of money, because you haven't gone out and isolated one piece from another. You've got a whole plan.
Okay.
So immediately, you're saving money. As a developer, I'd want to develop the whole piece or have an idea of how I'm going to develop the whole piece, rather than I'm developing one lot. Because if I develop one lot, okay, I've, I've got my ISMP on this lot, but this lot's different. Now I need to figure out how I'm working with this lot to get them working together. So this one doesn't affect this one.
Okay, and I have one last question. This is not with Gloucester, but the West Creek wetlands. How do they play into the inventory piece? That's a very important environmental area that we've worked hard to preserve.
Yeah, it is, and it's, it's a great environment. I personally, I'd like to see a park. Could you use it to manage more of your stormwater management? Yes. But it's all in how you do it. But I would say that the value added that you, you could make out of that wetland there is tremendous for the development. If it was in Europe, it would be an automatic decision. Boscalis is one of the largest dredging companies, port development companies in the world, and I was at their headquarters last year and saw what they did. And you look out their office, and they've got a wetland right there. All their corporate buildings are around it, and the wetland is in the middle of it. And it's a tremendous value. And they're proud of it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Aye, thank you very much. I think a couple of questions have been answered to me. This environmental assessment is something that Metro, or, well, that's not, it's not, it's not mandatory. No, but the integrated stormwater, how do you say that?
Integrated Stormwater Management Plan.
What do you call it?
Integrated Stormwater Management.
Yeah, the integrated stormwater.
ISMP.
ISMP, that, that is. When it comes to 20%, how does, how, is it 20%? That's just straight value for square acre, square foot?
Well, it doesn't, you know, I hate to have a 20% written in stone.
Yeah, okay.
Depends on the, on the watershed. You may actually want to look at, at developing an integrated stormwater management plan when it's only 5% or 10%. As I said, on something, on West Creek, if I would have been the developer, I would have looked at it 0% because I could have probably maximized my development more effectively than trying to piecemeal it together when I've got 20% developed.
Yeah.
I could save money.
Okay, so you just talked about timing. You said that, you know, you, you had looked at it in two or three hours, you'd, because of the agricultural land. But how, what's an estimated, I know, yeah, you tried to answer that question, but it's, like, is it weeks? Or in a case like this, if you were looking at something like this, it would be?
Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, yeah, it's hard to say.
Well, you know, one in Burnaby is, was basically, I would say it was between 80 and 100% developed, whether it was residential, commercial, not a lot of industrial, part of it was industrial. But in two weeks, I had my base map and I had all my layers laid out. And I knew exactly what was in that, what needed to be done, what the errors were, how to correct it. And I was able to present that to council.
So you get all your, all your homework done so that you don't have any unforeseen complications?
I'm a, I'm a technocrat, so I like to, I lay out my steps, and I like to build on each one. I'm a, I'm a technocrat, so I like to, I lay out my steps and I like to build on each one. I don't like to waste my time and as a consultant, I didn't like to waste my clients' money. As, when I worked for Metro Vancouver, Johnny Carline was our CEO at the time. And for every project, I had to build a business case. And if he wasn't satisfied with the business case, it didn't get done. Yep. And that's the way I feel the township should be. I'm, I'm a tax, I'm the taxpayer. I want to see the maximum amount of dollars or the use out of the dollars that we provide to the township. And that use maximized.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, well, based on your experience, maybe you can clarify something for me. And, and I think that this is what's made this whole area political football over the years because it has been in this regards. The province, the Ministry of the Environment mandated 20%. Why did they choose 20%? Like, what was their thinking behind that number? Because clearly this area at 18% is less than the 20%. So on the one hand, you've got environmentalists saying, well, even 0% is important, you should have one. But on the other hand, you've got the developer going, hey, I don't make the rules. I just live by the rules and the rules here say 20%. So what was the thinking behind the 20%?
I was probably there when we made the decision of 20% because I used to work for the Ministry of Environment before I went to Metro Vancouver.
Okay, so why, why did you do that?
I think it was because we, we had to choose something that would work throughout the province. We weren't just looking at the lower mainland. And development in the interior is different than the development of the lower mainland. Different, the development between municipalities in the lower mainland is different. And we've seen a flux. And if the ministry went back today and said, is it 20%? Is it 10%? They're going to come back and say, it's going to depend on the watershed. And when we were developing the regional ISMP criteria for the various municipalities, that was one of the things we looked at. And we looked at the 20% threshold. But we also looked at what makes sense? Should we be doing it at, on an individual basis? Our recommendation to the ministry, and the day I was in Victoria, was the day the ministry split into Forest Lands, Natural Resources Operations and Ministry of Environment. So that responsibility shifted. But the idea was is that if you look at it on an individual basis, based on the development plans, you get a better understanding. When I looked at it at Metro Vancouver, we had to look at it from a utility planning point of view. How do we supply water? How are we going to treat sewage? What's the air quality going to be? Is it going to be heavy industrial, light industrial, mixed density, commercial, residential? How do we manage that in developing the?
Okay, but if there's this need for flexibility, as you're suggesting, then why didn't somebody somewhere change the rules before now? Because the rule still say 20%.
The rule stays 20%, but the responsibility, I think, has been shifted down to the municipalities from the senior levels of government.
Okay, so did, in shifting that responsibility down, did they also shift down to us the right to say, well, we might or might not consider 20%? We might think 10% is a better threshold? Do we have the right to do that? I don't think we do. And that's the conundrum we're in.
And they're not going to make that decision at the senior level?
They're not.
No.
So, but you can see, we're the baby in the middle being pulled on both sides.
You're caught. You're caught. And I'm the taxpayer here saying, we need to, we need to maximize how we're using our dollars. Save our, our development costs. And, you know, do, there is a better way. Let's do it better. But let's maximize our cost savings. Let's not put the burden on the taxpayer.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Arneson, your light was still on. Okay, sorry. Okay, moving back to our agenda. Under Other Business, J1, there was a motion from Counselor Arneson. J1, yes.
Madam Chair, I don't think it was a motion as opposed to a question of clarity, but Counselor Arneson, having heard the delegation, may have further comments?
Thank you. Sorry, it was a previous motion. Right, thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you. Well, based on the information that we've heard, so we have an existing notice of motion and we have some further information. I am not sure if council is wanting to make a decision today to give further direction to staff regarding this issue. The one other thing that I would comment on with respect to the 20% is that really this is being triggered by an expectation that a developer will be asking for the rezoning of property. That I could be wrong because I'm not really a mathematician, but I believe it will put it over the 20% in that area. So staff could correct me if I am wrong, but it's quite a substantial rezoning.
Mr. Richardson or Mr. Zwag, do you know what the change would be in terms of percentage?
I do not at this moment.
Well, maybe that's something that we need to consider and that perhaps we should defer this until a subsequent council meeting because I don't think time is necessarily of the essence at the moment. And perhaps we need some time to consider from a staff perspective and also to integrate the information that we heard today to consider the potential amendment for what we anticipated doing. That's just my thought.
Madam Chair, I think we may be headed in a direction of, of perhaps looking at the first element, which is the inventory. What I'm hearing, I'm just putting this back out to council, that perhaps seeking funding for the entire study is premature. Maybe the request would be for funding for the first step, which is an inventory, the stage one, as referenced in the delegation.
Okay, I do have a speaker's list. Should we move through that first? Okay, thank you. Counselor Richter?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. I, I don't mind deferring it. I, I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to defer it. But my first question is, can we get permission from the Ministry of the Environment to reduce our threshold from 20% to 10%? Is that possible?
We can request. There's no, no, no way of knowing whether they'd agree or not. Likely because of some of the comments that it's intended to be provincial wide, it may be difficult. But again, council can request.
Okay, because it would seem to me, we've got, what, 700 kilometers of streams? We've got lots of watersheds. We've got lots of aquifers and so on. It would seem to me that we might have a bit of a unique situation here that's different from the cookie cutter that they use in the rest of the province. So that would be my first question. My second question, we did have a very long and what I thought was productive meeting between BD company representatives and our township staff last summer about how the water management plan that was being worked on between our staff and BD was going to be superior to an IMS or an IMW, ISMP. That was told to us. I distinctly remember hearing that message. So can we get a presentation from our staff on why what they're proposing with BD is superior to this ISMP?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, I heard that BD said that what they were doing was superior, but then I heard it morphed to that staff and BD said that. Mr. Zwag, were you aware of any of that? Mr. Richardson? Were you at such meeting?
Mr. Becken, I think the item would be in terms of the implementation. I think what BD was proposing is the implementation pieces to be more specific than an ISMP, which is more broad in terms of its scope, that would inform the sort of implement, the implementation items.
Perhaps it was suggested that a traditional stormwater management plan with a implementation strategy would be more beneficial for than an ISMP. I'm not suggesting it is, but could that have been what they were suggesting?
Yes, perhaps, Mr. Becken. And maybe as a supplemental to the previous question about the percentage area, the information we have includes, the percentage currently includes the Gloucester area, the portion of the Gloucester area within that catchment area.
So if Gloucester was fully built out, you're, it would still be less than 20%?
Correct.
So to answer Counselor Arneson's previous question, the additional lands being added would not change the ratio because they've already been included as being developable?
Correct. And I see Mr. Larson, who came up with that information, nodding.
So it's 18% either way you cut it. So the issue is the 20% versus the 18%. But in, in any event, I still think our staff needs to update us on what it is that BD has pitched to us, how our staff have responded to it, and how does this whole thing compare to an ISMP? And, and those to me are two key pieces of information that council needs. And hopefully, once council gets that, we can make a resolution to require an ISMP. I mean, that's maybe what we would like to have done here, but it's not going to happen unless we can get around this 20% threshold.
Thank you. Counselor Fox?
Thank you. Yeah, and I think Mr. Armstrong has raised some, some good points. But I think that we need to, and I appreciate the comments both my colleagues here have made, that we need to, I'm not sure if the word is defer or just take some time here to go back to staff and say, okay, where are we in this process? Where are we relative to what BD and ourselves talked about back in that meeting? And what, what do we need to move forward? I'm not prepared to say, you know, let's, let's just jump on the wagon and move forward. I think what we need to do here is find, get the informative balance. And, and Mr. Armstrong has created a very theoretical model here, which I think, as I alluded to, is, is pretty substantive. And we need to find out where our staff sit relative to this model and the West Creek headwaters and, for that matter, the whole West Creek drainage area. So I think, I'm not sure if we just have to defer or what, what we need to do for a motion here, but we need to make, send this back, have staff make a presentation, in my opinion, and see how we can work our way through this in a constructive, with this constructive outcome in mind.
Thank you. I still have Counselor Davis on the speaker's list. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. I, I'm just, if we defer this, is this going to? Like, there are, there are some wording in here that I, I find questionable, that council requests BD group to undertake a contri, a contri, hence of plan in a timely manner. And another one is, staff is taking a direction. There has been an interpretation that staff ought to pursue the accelerated of the stormwater management for Gloucester, which now intends to recoup costs from the developer at a further date. And I'm just, everything that we talked about here with this environmental ass, environmental assessment could put, put timelines on those. And if we, if we don't, I, I have no problem deferring it, but are we going to, are we going to look about studying it first? And if we do that, can, can, can they, can they go ahead and get some development permits and start building before this is done? Maybe a question to Mark?
Mr. Becken?
Mark, Mr. Becken?
Well, there's no zoning before council at the moment, so they couldn't do anything without going through the zoning process. By way of that process, council would be able to control it. So this is as to the, what we call the, the golf course lands. There's other lands already designated in Gloucester that, of course, could be developed, but I think this focus was focusing on the additional lands that are trying to be brought into production.
Okay. So maybe, okay, just as lo, I'm just worried that, you know, we, we are going to drop the ball here and, and because I can remember that meeting that we had with BD. It was on a, it was on a lot that had a heck of a good stormwater management plan put in years and years ago. They had, we approved zero, zero development right to the line. So I just wonder if we, you know, we, we need to maybe make sure that we come back with something that we're not going to miss out on and do this right the first time. Thank you.
Counselor Arneson, you were back on the list?
I sense from council's conversation about this that there is a consensus that we would like to move forward. We need some more information. Personally, I think the timeliness matter really was more meant to try and put something together prior to the request for rezoning so that the whole reason or rationale to have an integrated stormwater management plan from the planning point of view is to have the empirical scientific information, including engineering, ecology, all of those things in place prior to making the decision. And so I was struck by the fact that if we are putting those two components together, that we will not have an opportunity as a council to review those things independent of each other. And I think the assessment of what will and will not be possible with respect to the rezoning is critical to good decision-making. And so I am not personally supportive of any application to rezone until some type of integrated stormwater management plan. If it's proved to be superior, that BD has one, I'm all ears. If it's proved to be better, if it's more cost-effective, we could come up with a different model, that's good too. I just think that it's really important that we do that piece first. And if it's staged and that makes some pragmatic sense, we could potentially save some money as well as the developer. But that was really the direction I thought that this should be going and why we're talking about it now. Because, you know, we, we do need to consider this. And I just would say about West Creek in particular, it's a very unusual situation. It has been identified by the province as one of only two very sensitive streams in the province. And we are talking about the headwaters where there is a very concentrated area of industrial development. And so further to Counselor Richter's point, yes, I think we shouldn't really have a cookie cutter approach. And whether or not this actually tips it over, you know, the 18 or 20% or whatever that is, I think that's a bit of a red herring, that, you know, we shouldn't use that as an absolute standard. So I'm hoping that by deferring it and getting more staff information, that we can look forward to having a better idea about where we can go with this to get the best decision made in the end.
Thank you. Counselor Richter, you were back on the list, or do you?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to defer this to staff to get some more information, a couple more pieces of information that I'd like to have is what, what's the anticipated cost of this ISMP? And the second piece is, if in fact, I mean, the last paragraph here says that the issue raised with the potential recouping of partial or total costs upon future completion of the rezoning. If BD is in fact going to come back and ask us to rezone what is already parkland, i.e. a golf course, so that they can build more buildings, what do we get out of that? What, what is the public good that the community gets out of that? And can we make it a condition of them even contemplating asking us to rezone the golf course? That they have to do an ISMP as a public good?
Mr. Becken?
In reverse order, we perhaps could make it a condition of the rezoning that a study be undertaken or there be a contribution for a study, more likely, because the study in that case would be independent of the rezoning because it would be half the, a full-blown ISMP could, ISWMP could take longer. But yes, there could be the requirement of the rezoning for some sort of contribution. As well, the overall costing, I think, is important. And from what I'm then hearing from council, I'll give this a try to see if this captures it. I don't think you're seeking a deferral. I think you're seeking a referral and that we don't want to actually consider what's before you now. We want to go in a bit of a different direction. And I think that would be to refer for a presentation to include the anticipated process and cost. and costs, uh, for Gloucester, uh, of the parameters of a stormwater management plan, the parameters for an integrated stormwater management plan and, uh, the cost to complete a watershed inventory, something of that nature. But that's just trying to frame the discussion for council as we go forward.
And public good. Can we, can we change the standard?
Um, council could, but that's then anticipating what the actual application would look like. And I think this is more of a fact-finding mission to determine what the options and parameters are because we don't have an application at this point. Or do we have an application? There's one working its way through the system. So there is one working its way through the system. I would just suggest that might be the subject of a different, uh, process and presentation because this is kind of setting the parameters for the overall watershed specifically in terms of this area of it, whereas the application would have to be considered on its merits in a different process.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Uh, Counselor Fox, you had a question? Oh, you're?
Actually, I didn't have a question. I wanted to know if, uh, Ms. Bauer was able to paraphrase what Mr. Backen said. Do you have it? Do you need a second? Okay. We'll give her a second.
I just happened to write this one down. So it was to refer, uh, for a presentation to include the anticipated costs and process for, uh, Gloucester, including the parameters of a stormwater management plan, the parameters for an integrated stormwater management plan and the costs, uh, to complete a watershed inventory.
Okay. I'll move that.
Counselor Fox?
No, 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 no. You jumped ahead of the queue. I hadn't finished speaking. And mine is more comprehensive? My motion is more comprehensive and more? No, we're referring.
Head of the second?
I noticed, uh, just as a, okay. So I'm moving that.
Counselor Longs, the second.
Okay. Uh, just a comment, Mr. Larson left the building. I don't know if that means anything, Mr. Zwag or not. Maybe he, uh? Yeah, maybe he is. Okay.
Okay. So we have a mover and a second, uh, for that. Ms. Bauer, do I label this, uh, or show of hands? J1? J1? Thank you. Sorry, you had a question, Counselor Richter? Cancel the vote. Sorry, it turned off. Hang on.
Is it possible for staff to get back to us before the BD application hits this table?
Mr. Richardson, I understand the application's in process, but I suspect it's quite some time away.
Staff are actively working with the proponent on advancing that application, but certainly we could, um, advance this item prior to that. Can we afford it? That's council's desire.
Yeah. So could, do we need to add that to the motion?
I, I don't think so because I think Mr. Larson would be undertaking this initiative and we'd probably try to do it, uh, in the next few months. And I suspect that there's still a lot of work to do on the, uh, actual application.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll call the question on, um, J1 for the referral. And that motion passes unanimously. Okay. That wraps up the agenda for the afternoon. Thank you. Terminated.